Okay, I'm gonna call tonight's meeting to order. December 2nd at 6:30. It's a regular Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Bob Carlson, the first. We also have Selectwoman Nicole Porter, Selectman John Gashion, and our Admin Finance Officer Suzanne Thero. Now, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, as usual, we'll start with public comment. Does anyone have any public comment for this evening? Just announce who you are, Lori, and your address. Just push the button and you should be good. On the bottom.
There you go, that button. Thank you. Lori Hopkins, Kavanaugh 1 Pine Woods Road in Laurel Glen. We're the first house between Clark's Falls and Laurel Glen. And it's a great place to be. And I'd love to get some signs up for public meetings or special announcements on my corner, on my land, so we can let all the people up there know what's going on. Because I think a lot of people don't even know when we have special meetings. I don't think that, you know, just maybe having some signs outside of this little area might be nice.
We do have signs in Fox Falls. And we typically put one on the corner of Pucker and Dennison.
Well, my little corner is available, and I got a lot of traffic. I can tell you, I have a high traffic count. I'm here because I've been in town for like three years. We've been working, my husband and I, really working hard to try to rescue, the horse rescue, which was Phoenix Rising, which was in very, very, very poor condition when we bought it. We lived in a RV on the land for about two years while we were renovating. It's been a tough time for us to be in North Stonington, but I'm very blessed to be here. This town is very special. And I have a certain expertise. I ran for US Congress. I don't know if anybody knows me, but I ran in 64 towns. I'm not running for anything, by the way, just want to let you know. And I am unaffiliated person. I am not a Democrat. I am not a Republican. I am unaffiliated for a very important reason. Right now, we're losing a lot of what we call home rule. And I'd really love everybody to sort of engrain that term in your brain because it's the only thing that is protecting the town of Stonington tonight. North Stonington, rather, and Stonington. And every town and municipality in the state of Connecticut. The state has pushed through House Bill 8002, which removes all local control of zoning, police powers, everything. No, you will not make any decisions. And the people sitting before you will not govern you. You will be governed through Hartford. We have home rule in our Constitution. You are obligated, each one of you, are obligated to defend my rights in this town and everybody's rights in this town. You have to stand up. You have to fight and protect our Constitution. That's your obligation as an elected official in the town of North Stonington. Because we have constitutions now. The greatest thing about having the 250th anniversary of our country is that this gives us an opportunity in this town to be the leader in the whole entire state of Connecticut to reinforce, reclaim, and protect ourselves using home rule, which is in our, the 10th article in our Constitution. I have provided information, I hope you pick it up. And it gives the town an opportunity to fight against the state. I don't know if there's anybody in this room that has been part of planning this takeover of local government. But right now, we have a regional planning group that has decided our future. You have no say? None of us have any say. They have stripped not only zoning, but application processes. We don't even get to review it. This is all done through Desegregate Connecticut. This organization has decided that white people, there's too many of us, so we must be desegregated. Now, I grew up in an inner city. I come from New London. I watched Fort Trumbull be leveled. My family comes, Italian immigrants, leveled by redevelopment by the state. Millions of dollars, everybody padded their wallets. And they tore down an historic neighborhood in the name of redevelopment. This is no different. Governor Lamont's plan for transportation-oriented housing is not for our families. It's not for your sons and daughters. It's not for affordability. It's to warehouse as many people that are not locals as possible in housing that are non-owner occupied. They have no vested interest. They will take from the schools, they will take from all of the services. We will have to build services to suit them, but they are not your friends and family. I know New London, I know high-rise housing. I know transportation-oriented housing. It might look pretty and shiny and new when it starts, it doesn't end up that way. And I have been in these high-rises. I'm a real estate broker by trade. I was the largest HUD broker in the state of Connecticut when I ran for US Congress. I represented the housing and urban development. My clientele was Haitian, it was Puerto Rican, it was Mexican. I have more people of color in my friends' groups and my clientele than probably any other Realtor in the entire state. And this is not what they want. This is not the housing they want. This isn't the housing anybody wants. Non-owner occupied housing is the least desirable housing we could possibly build or invest in. This is corporate, a corporate slush fund. And it takes away all of our rights. So I'm asking you to review two things that I dropped, that I gave to the Board of Selectmen to review. And I greatly appreciate your time and consideration of them. One is a proclamation and one is a resolution. And these two documents can be tweaked in any way that the town wants to tweak them. But we haven't even had a conversation. We weren't even in on the conversations. Nobody in this town knows that the government just supplanted our entire Planning and Zoning Department, all of our police powers and our rights to home rule. So I really am very proud of the work that I am doing with the people I'm doing. You're the first town in Connecticut this has been presented to. It is going to be presented across the state. These are all unaffiliated, non-political, nonpartisan people. We are conservative constitutionalists. That is our law, and everyone has to obey it. What we are seeing is a complete usurpation of our government, our democracy, and our republic in a manner that is not allowed. It is unconstitutional and unlawful. So moving on from there, if you have questions about this, I think this is a very in-depth conversation. Want to move on? The second thing is, my first meeting was, unfortunately, I came into the Avalonia land purchase. And I've outlined why that purchase is not suitable for the town of North Stonington. And also, it's not allowed in by ordinance, and it has to be stopped. If it was that check, I would like to know if it was issued. I have asked for a lawyer to find out when and if it was issued. But the information, and it's written down in detail why we need to not give Avalonia the $75,000. And I would like to say, I'm not opposed to open space. I'm not opposed to affordable housing, but I heard a lot of misinformation, including that open space creates a more affordable community. It does not. And I want to say that the ordinance, we need, $75,000 is a lot of money. I don't know what anybody in this room would do with 75 grand. I know I could do a lot of great things with it. We don't want to give it to somebody where we're relinquishing and not actually acquiring something. And that's what we did. And we did it under an obscured situation where standard materials were not provided, notice was not given, and the information was deceptive as hell. So I'm asking not to go forward, to revisit that ordinance and make sure that we never give money unless we have a vested interest. We decided to give 75 grand to the state of Connecticut and all of our rights, just give them all away. And we were lied to in that meeting by Avalonia. And Avalonia is not only not telling us the truth and not providing us the information that we deserve to have at that meeting, including a purchase and sale or land restrictions, deed restrictions, but they are acquiring large swaths of land, none of which is free in perpetuity. I want to leave here tonight with one thing that you need to understand. And that is, at Fort Trumbull, the state came in and they took everything. And people made boatloads of money. Every attorney was paid off. Every building company got a contract. Everybody was forced to, they padded their wallets to shut up while everybody was losing their homes and getting forced off the land. That is the most horrible thing I've ever seen in my entire life. So I don't want it to happen here, and I can see it happening. But also, I can tell you, the state doesn't give a damn about our water. The state wants to build over 25 data centers. I'm going to give you one statistic, and you can look it up. Do you know what AI is? Does everybody know what AI is? Okay. You go to AI and you put in a question, right? What question do you have? How do I make lasagna across a bottle of water? That one question on Chat GPS, GPT, or whatever it is, was a whole bottle of water because the data centers need water. We can't give them our aquifers. We cannot allow them to build these data centers that strip our water from us. And not only are they going to strip the water because they need it for the day, it's an environmental disaster that is happening in Connecticut right now. Not only do they need the water, they're going to build swaths of solar panels to power that. So you're going to have all of this Avalonia land if the government at any time says, hey, we want Fort Trumbull, we want Avalonia land. You have no protections. The concept of in perpetuity is a complete legal falsehood lie. That should never have been presented the way it was at that meeting. Also, in perpetuity is a very common law-wise that we have the arrogance to think that we should take land because this young woman, this wonderful woman in the last meeting, her idea is to get a, what is it, what was it called? A column, a corridor. She wants a corridor right through North Stonington that no one can touch. You can't use it for passive, you can walk there. That's it. Because she thinks for some reason the turkeys can't cross the road. Or maybe deer don't go on my land because they need a corridor. That corridor is the most dangerous thing. Avalonia is not a friend to open space. Avalonia is a partner of the state, not the partner of North Stonington. So all I'm saying is, we have incredible resources here. If we want open space, I'm happy to have open space. But it should be used by our people. Beekeeping, maple tapping. We have a gentleman here who's a maple tapper. Supposed to be here today. Maple tapping, all kinds of things that we could do on this land. Avalonia doesn't allow a single thing, nothing. And what they said, you can't, I can't go to you, Bob. I can't go to my Board of Selectmen and say, hey, do you mind if we use that land? For, we want to have a sheep shearing. Nope, no sheep on that land, nothing. That is not only unhealthy for the land, go up to Clark's, go up to, right now, one of the Avalonia sites, they've got more money than God. They didn't need our 75,000. They were going to buy it anyway, we just gave it to them. They are spending money like silly fools. And it's not good for our parks or our open space. I hike, I went up to our local Avalonia land preserve. They have a tree planting project going on. It isn't working. So the entire area is filled with plastic junk everywhere, like someone dumped a big truck full of plastic in the middle of the woods. I love, my farm, our farm, 100% organic. We're rebuilding the earth. We're taking care of the water. We're doing everything, the reasons why we moved to North Stonington, but those have been taken away from us. I will not stay in this town, I cannot invest in this town, knowing that you are not in power, knowing that our zoning officials are not in power, knowing that our fire and police officials are no longer in power. Because I don't feel like I, I just don't feel like it's a good place anymore. So I'm asking you, fight this with everything you can. I'm begging you to learn what our, you have to be greedy. Every one of the selectmen, you need to be greedy and protect your power. This is your power they're taking away. And your power protects us. I don't have anything else to say. Happy to answer questions. I'm sorry if I'm not clear in any manner. But I'd like to see a committee put together for the anniversary on the 4th of July that is a municipal committee and that is run not through a couple of volunteers, but is a real concerted effort to get these different groups together. And let's have one hell of a 4th of July in North Stonington. I think we should make everybody in Connecticut jealous of who we are because we have such an incredible town. Please protect it. I'll do whatever I can to help. And if anybody wants my advice in regards to the assessments that just came out and that type of thing, my expertise is real estate. So I'm more than happy to help people. I don't do it for income any longer, though. So thank you very much for your time.
Before you sit down, Lori, we're not going to get into a discussion saying it's not on the agenda. If someone else wants to make public comment on what you said, they're more than welcome to. But would you like me to put this on the agenda for the 16th? And would you like to present your thoughts again, would people know it's on the agenda?
Yes, I would. And I'd also like to ask a question if Planning and Zoning would, are there people here from Planning and Zoning tonight?
I don't see any.
I really believe that Planning and Zoning has some explaining to do.
Well, they have a John Windsor next meeting. It's the 2nd Thursday in December.
December 11th.
December 11th. Planning and Zoning has a meeting in this room on December 11th.
Well, I really think that the Board of Selectmen, I don't know how much you knew about HB 8002. Were you briefed on it? Did you do any briefings to the public?
No, because it just came through within the last few weeks. We did talk about the 5002, which was a much even worse plan than the 8002. No, we're just starting that investigation now.
However, your zoning officials did know. And I'm curious to know who on your zoning, or on our zoning board is familiar with this organization, Diversify Connecticut. If you want to see who's running the town of Stonington, here's all there in the North Stonington, every town in Connecticut, these are the people that are now running your town. They were given complete authority over all police powers.
So why don't we put this on the agenda on the 16th, if you'd like, and you can present?
Yes, please.
And then we can get into a discussion.
And what about the committee for the 4th of July?
Well, we can put that as a vote on the Board of Selectmen meeting also.
Thank you. And the Avalonia money?
That's already settled at the town meeting. You'd have to have, we'd have to go to a second town meeting, which would require a petition. It's already been approved by the town.
So it has to be a legal action, then?
It does.
The check was cut?
No, no, I think I told you.
You can't cut that check legally any longer.
So the check, I asked him when he required it. He said, there's other properties they're working on, they're probably looking at sometime early, late spring.
Oh, awesome, that's wonderful. But I can tell you, legally, it would be not advisable to release that check under the current circumstances. And I did a public notice because that is the kindest way to approach this, to give notice and give everyone a chance to correct it. But it can't stand, I won't allow that $75,000 to go to Avalonia. It belongs to us.
All right, so we are a town meeting formal government, as we said. And that was passed at a town meeting, 50 to 35, which is legitimate. I mean, it wasn't even one vote, not that it added one vote, it'd still be passing. It's already passed, so we have a town meeting, it was in the ordinance, and we did that. So therefore, we.
It was actually against the ordinance, sir. We didn't acquire anything. That entire purchase is inaccurate and wrong. And it has to be challenged because we didn't acquire anything. And the ordinance specifically says for the acquiring of property, and we didn't acquire it.
Unless we, as Board of Selectmen, see some sort of action that, as far as I'm concerned, that is already, the check has not been cut, but the check has been approved by the town. Not the Selectmen, the town meeting formal government. And it was in accordance with our ordinance and our plan of conservation development. So I.
Well, it wasn't actually. Actually, it wasn't, it was just never discussed honestly. So I have to tell you, all of my points in that cease and desist are very relevant points. The information was not provided. Due diligence was not performed. You cannot have a vote without that information. It nullifies the vote. Now, I know you, and I appreciate you telling me what you just told me. I will proceed whatever way I have to. But I can tell you, some of the statements you just made were not necessarily accurate according to my claims. And my claims are accurate. So if we went to court, I would win, I know I would win. So I don't want to go to court. I don't want the town to be in court. But I don't want the town to take money and give it to the state when they don't need it, or Avalonia, that doesn't need it. And it did not meet our plan of development at all. Because we acquired nothing, have no control, and have no say. So it violated the ordinance. And I'm not sure, I don't have enough expertise to decide exactly what to do about that today. But I'll figure it out. And I would appreciate any help from you to correct that and return this money and stop this foolishness and give that money to our senior center for the 250th, our historical society for the 250th, our recreation department, our fire department, our parade department. That money is needed for this.
Lori, that, I just, I don't want to interrupt, but that, can you guys hear me? That 75,000 is in a specific account for land acquisition and the like. We reviewed the ordinance before presenting it to the town. So you can't just take 75,000 from one line item and buy something else that is not by definition in our ordinance for land use. So I understand you want money to do all kinds of great things, but that 75,000 had been sitting in that account for the better part of 10 years.
And that's the problem, nobody knew it existed, so nobody could ask for it.
But that's a matter of public record.
Well, actually, there was a person at the last meeting that said, where the hell has this money been? I've never been able to see it. So I heard a lot, I listened to everything that comes out of these people's mouths. I heard a couple of things. I heard people said, I want to see copies of these documents that should have been at that meeting when that vote was held, and they were withheld from us. Very wrong. Nobody does that in real estate. I heard them say, I requested this and to be at this meeting, and it was deliberately not brought. That was his opinion, whether it's true or not, I don't know. But I'm listening to people. And I can tell you that how that line item, that $75,000, got put into a set aside that was for municipal use and/or open space, and they got shoved into an open space fund, it got hidden. That's how it got hidden. So for 10 years, nobody knew it existed. That money could have gone to the senior center, it could have gone to the fire department, it could have gone, it could have been used to fix soccer fields. And it just sort of hit it. So now it's going to the state, we're giving it to the state of Connecticut so that they can own 100 acres in Stonington. Makes absolutely no sense because it was presented disingenuously at that meeting. We were hoodwinked into giving that $75,000. And the reality was never explained to the people intentionally. And so I think it's wrong, but that's.
I guess we'll say thank you, and we'll see you on the 16th.
Thank you so much.
Stay, because there's other things that you're on the agenda for, so.
Thank you so much.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Brian Rathbun.
I kind of go along with what Lori is saying, except I don't believe it was all hidden because I followed it. You know, and you guys know that. I follow the Board of Finance, and I followed you guys. But I do agree that money should be used for our town, not for some organization. Like, I think I said that at the last meeting anyways. But I come tonight simply because I've been thinking about it. And Bob, you know I'm big and following what the state's doing to our towns. And I was against the 830G when it first come out. And that's what started this whole mess up. Then they went to House Bill 5002. Well, that didn't set very well, so the special session up in Hartford, I think you know what happened there, where they come up with the HB 8002 bill. And it was no public input on that bill. It just went to that special session and voted in. And then the governor just signed it. I myself, I even called our governor, of course, he's not going to talk to me. So I talked to one of the people that answered the phone, I don't know who he is, and told him my thoughts. But what I'd like to see done, if possible, I'd like to see our officials check with other towns. Because there's like 139 towns that do not have the 10%. That's a lot of towns that are in the same situation as us. I'd like to see us get together with them and see if they have any interest in that. And I'd like our town to do it. Check with our town attorney and see if we can appeal that HB 8002 and have public opinion on it, have discussion on it, how it affects our town. One of the big things Lori said is our aquifers, and I've been saying this for years, we need to protect that because we don't only supply North Stonington with that water, but we supply a lot of towns around us with that water. And if the state doesn't realize that water is important, let's shut them off for a while with water and see how they feel with that. I'm just getting tired of them. And that land that Avalonia wants, that's the other thing that really bothers me simply because the state with this new bill that they put in can come in and say, eminent domain, we're going to take it. They could do it to any one of our farms, they can do it to any open space. And they can say it's for affordable housing. And I keep hearing people say affordable housing is for our kids and our grandparents or our parents. You really think that's going to happen? We're a sanctuary state. Those people all need a place to live. What's to stop the state?
The only kind of, I think Garrett told us a few. They said they gave up bow hunting permits to people for their property. Well, with a rifle, you could have roughly 14 people on that amount of property. So bow hunters, you could at least have that. My thing is, I'm wondering how many of the people that got the bow permits were not members of their organization. Seems like they just want property for their members to use, not for the whole public. I mean, if you look on Facebook, you see it in there. They're looking for help to take and clean the trails, to do this. They don't have enough people to manage what they have now. And they just want more. Far as the money, it seems like it was taken out of the account. And they knew they wanted to do it. With all the money they had, they should have left it where it was and taken their money out of their account and moved it over. They said it was allocated for something else. This money was allocated for the town for acquisition of land, not for a private group. So I think it should have been brought more attention to it. So it could have went to a referendum with that amount of money being exchanged from one category to another. And also for something that didn't involve all the town people. That's all this time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
On line, we have Jen Strunk.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my friends. Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. So this comment is a little bit more for Laurie and anyone else who might be listening. I'm not actually sure if we've met in person. I'm Jen Strunk. I am the chair of North Stonington's America 250 Committee. The Board of Selectmen are aware of this. So the date is set for June 27th of next year. Anyone who is interested in joining me is more than welcome. I would love to have you. So rather than make it a whole separate agenda item for your next meeting, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm very, very easy to find on Facebook. Or you can email me, get involved. My email address is Jen, one N, jen@jenstrunk.com. That's all.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks.
Any other public comment answering online? No? Nobody else in the audience? You can make a comment.
Sorry, I have a comment, but I couldn't figure out where the hand raising part was.
Oh, okay.
I just unmuted.
Of Sarah Nelson?
Yes, this is Sarah Nelson, 62, 60, what was my address? 362 Denison Hill Road. I just want to make some comments on the comments, I guess, that have been shared tonight. Like to welcome our new neighbor who I have yet to meet. And just an ask. I really, given that they're new to the town, I would love them to maybe approach the town in these conversations with a little bit more curiosity and good intent. We all are working really hard for what's best for North Stonington. And coming to the table open-minded would help us to be able to bridge the gap on these kind of conversations a little bit more together. So just to give my own perspective, I think it's important to remind the folks listening that, one, this property is privately owned. It has not ever been town-owned. So we are not relinquishing any property. The owners are choosing to sell the land to Avalonia. That's their preference. And I totally appreciate anyone who wants to argue the point that we should or shouldn't participate in that. That's totally a valid, a valid, you know, debate and opinion. But I also want to note that because we are not the buyer, we are not party to the purchase and sale agreement, or the deed restrictions, or Avalonia's internal documents. So while they may choose to share that with us so that we can share it with the town if that's appropriate, we do not have those, necessarily have those documents. We do not own them. And in terms of the Land Acquisition Fund Ordinance, Section 2-101, permits and expenditures are, this permits expenditures for open space and municipal use. So I appreciate the take on it and the perspective, but I don't think it's as black and white as it's being shared right now. So in reality, this land is not likely to become townland under any scenario. And so I think we have to keep that in mind as we work through this. Also, as somebody who sits on the Board of Finance, who vigorously debated this, I do take exception to the idea that anyone is colluding or hiding or preventing people from having information. As people have seen from your decorum and Nicole's decorum and John here in the meeting, our town is incredibly approachable and people are wonderful in terms of trying to provide folks with the information they need. So I would just love if some of our new neighbors could keep that in mind going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Nino, 91 Main Street. Sarah, you and I are going to talk about this tomorrow night. But just as a refresh for everyone, there were a lot of questions from the Board of Finance when the Avalonia purchase, or use of the acquisition fund came to the Board of Finance. And that was on October 1, and it's recorded. And one of the questions was, was to be able to see the purchase and sale agreement, which the meeting of 10/21, Selectman Mastriani's last meeting, asked Dennis Maine, the Avalonia Chair, if we'd have it before the vote. He said, yes, we did not. So I just want to clarify that. So sorry, Sarah. We did ask for it. It was formally requested. It was agreed to by Avalonia, and we didn't get it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I apologize to the caller for her reaction to my expressing my opinion in the town of North Stonington and her attempt to temper my opinions and her hope that I will somehow be a different person than I am. Or I'm criticizing the wonderful people in this town. I take offense to that, actually. Love to meet you. You're welcome to stop by, 1 Pine Woods Road, anytime I'm there. And I am very open-minded. I'm also an expert in real estate. And I know for damn sure that I would lose my license if I approved any money to be transferred without doing due diligence. Part of due diligence is seeing a purchase and sale agreement. This town had no right to give any money towards any purchase that we did not have ownership interest in. That's what the ordinance says. It's for the procurement of property. We did not procure property. I'm not going to argue that fact. It is a legal fact. In terms of this town, the Board of Selectmen is one of the finest Board of Selectmen I've ever run across. This is one of the nicest towns. And I could have lived anywhere. I could have been anywhere. I was in Stonington Borough. My husband and I can be anywhere at any time. I chose this town for a specific reason. Because of who you are, because of who the families are that have been here for generations. These are incredible stories. I know them. I'm going to tell you something. 1 Pine Woods, The Rescue. I have a library of historic documents there for the town of North Stonington. And what I see is that we, this town, you, I don't think the people know how wonderful it is. So I really kind of take offense that I'm being pegged into, oh, I'm attacking the town. I am not attacking this town. I am not attacking the Board of Selectmen. I'm simply standing our ground. I know the Constitution. And I have to make one specific comment. Everyone here, including the Board of Finance, needs to read the ordinance that I've prepared and our resolution. Lawyers are people who teach law. I'm going to ask you a question. Does anyone know what the word law means? Anyone in this room, can you tell me what law means? Anyone? No one can. You know why? I can guarantee you, if I had asked that question in 1850 in the town of North Stonington, everyone would have known. The word law stands for, it's an acronym. It stands for land, air, and water. That acronym is from the Old Testament in the Bible. Our laws are biblical. Our foundations, our constitution, are based on the Bible and the laws of the Old Testament. People don't know that because we don't teach civics any longer. We don't teach our constitution any longer. The Connecticut Constitution is extra special. The Connecticut Constitution, which is being burned and torn and tattered and destroyed and will not be in existence in five years, I guarantee it, guarantees your power. Every person in this room that is leading us, you are our leaders, and that is your power, home rule. It's in our constitution. There's one group of people that aren't going to defend that. Attorneys. The Connecticut Bar Association is not a constitutional organization. The attorneys in the state of Connecticut do not know how to fight for constitutional rights. They work for the Bar Association. It's a foreign corporation. They work for the state of Connecticut. You're going to ask an attorney to protect us who works for the state of Connecticut, is licensed by the state of Connecticut. Their entire career depends on obeying Lamont and the state of Connecticut. If you can find a single constitutional lawyer, please introduce them to me. Right now, I have to tell you, I am the first person in the entire state of Connecticut that has entered my appearance in the US Federal District Court in Bridgeport. I am recognized to practice law in the Federal District Court in Bridgeport. You know what I'm practicing law as? Not an attorney. I'm practicing law as what's called a next friend. I file motions. I'm heard by the judge. And I'm going to the Supreme Court. Me, by myself. No attorney, no lawyers. And there's a reason for that. The Constitution is our law. But if you think you're going to hire an attorney that's going to enforce the Constitution, let's find them. There's not very many. You can count them on one hand. That's the problem. We're having people review this stuff that really don't understand our rights, don't want to protect our rights. If you ask your attorneys, what's home rule? Do you know what home rule is? They haven't read the Constitution in probably 40 years. So they don't have a clue what home rule is. And if you, your eyes will glaze over and they'll say, oh, yeah. How much, it's going to be $250,000. That ordinance and that proclamation? Please read it. And it's totally legal. It's constitutional. And if you can pacify an attorney, great. But regardless, you don't need to, you know, you need to really pay attention to your powers and seize them. This presentation is the first in the state of Connecticut. Okay, these, I work with a lot of really incredible people. The next one is going to be in Putnam. We're doing one in Shelton. I'm not doing it. Other people are. These are my, this is my work. Other people's work will be different a little bit. But it's the same basic premise. We have a constitution. We have power. Let's protect it. Basically, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir. You can just state your name and your address, please.
Yeah, Martin King, 196 Bloombridge Road. I just want to give credit to our town government. My daughter lives in a town in another state. In order to speak at any of the town meetings, you have to actually request to the board before the meeting to be put on the agenda. And you're only allowed two minutes to speak. And they have a timer and a buzzer. They give you a 20-second warning and then shut the mic off. So I just want to commend our town government. This is the only town that I've been in that allows people to speak their mind as long as it takes, which we saw tonight.
I will say this. We, at Board of Select meetings, we've always, and Nicole's been with me for four years. John's new. We've always allowed at the Board of Selecter meeting to not limit you. And you don't have to tell us ahead of time that you're going to speak.
I know, I know.
A town meeting, we do. But we also give people as many chances to come back as they want. So when everyone's had their first term, then if you have a second term, you can come up and come up a third term. It doesn't matter. So, but we do have to limit time on a town meeting. Then we, but we don't do it on a Board of Selecter meeting. So we're here anyway, so.
Yeah, other towns don't have that. Public comments not on the agenda.
I will say too, my, I have two doors in my office that are always open. Unless you're in there and you're asking me to close them because we're going to talk about something you don't want public. But my doors are open and anyone's always welcome to go in and speak. I'm usually there five days a week, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Nothing online? We're going to move on with our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November 18.
I'll make a motion, accept the minutes as written for October or November 18.
Great, thank you. Second, final call, any discussion? No discussion here, none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Perfect, that's three zero. Is there any Selectman comments? Either Selectmen want to make a comment this evening about anything? This is your chance. Good, okay. First Select, so it's first Select comment, but also correspondence. And we did receive correspondence from Laurie, as she mentioned, about the ordinance and resolution. And there's copies up there if anyone wants to see one. I'd like to take that. Again, I got this at 3, I think 3 o'clock yesterday. I was at a conference all day today. I just got back. So I haven't had a chance to really dig into it, which I would like to do before I start speaking about anything. I'd like to add this to Laurie already. I've asked, she's asked if she can be on the agenda on December 16 and present more on what she spoke about this evening. I would just say this, and the Board of Select will be not, will entertain comment on the $75,000 in the Avalonia. I'm not going to prepare any action for that or any votes because it's already been voted on by the town, unless we see some action that we have to act on. But as far as the HB 8002, all the other things that you've brought up, Laurie, you're more than welcome to present to us. And that'll be on the 16th. And I can put you on the agenda. I can put you on fairly early, right after the first Selectman comments and correspondence. And you will actually have time to present. Okay? Okay, that's it. I also want to mention to both Nicole and John, you were here last year. We have the Wreaths Across America. That's happening on the 13th at 10 o'clock. And it's happening at where we move the monuments this year. And they're going to also do things at the Plain Cemetery and the 1049 near the Unchrist Baptist Stretches. And I put an email into Alex Sanders to see if I can get two people to play taps. Apparently Gary Barron is playing the bagpipes taps. Apparently Gary Barron, Gary Barron is playing the bagpipes taps at the uh, monuments.
So the thirteenth at ten?
Thirteenth.
And where are we meeting, knowing that this year we're doing it at multiple?
So we're just going to be there. Then they're going to send the group out to each of the others.
Okay, so we're meeting right at the monument. Okay.
If there's any speaking like there was last year, we'll do it there. And then it's at the tenth and so on.
Okay, very good.
So it's on the thirteenth at ten. Okay, um, we have a tentative Board of Selectment schedule for our meetings for two thousand twenty-six. It's in your packet. Um, last time we wrote this up, I asked you to review it. John did review and mentioned that I had the wrong date on one of my, it should be January sixth and not second. I think that's, is it still in your packet? If not, it's wrong. It should say January sixth.
The packet still says the second.
Okay, well, it is the sixth, so we, do you want to just amend it since I guess my, probably my fault if I gave Jen the wrong one, but I had amended it, so January sixth will be that meeting. And is, and I don't think there's any, I went through it again. I don't think there's anything else. If something comes up, we can always move a meeting. It just becomes a special meeting. So um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended Board of Selectmen schedule as January sixth instead of January second.
I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen meetings for the year um, as amended with January sixth instead of the second.
Great.
I'll second.
Perfect. Motion by Nicole, by John, any discussion? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, three zero with the amendment. Number eight, Gary Anino requests a, to tap town property trees. In your packet, there is the three lots that are in, on um, Main Street. Now, that's upper or lower main, but it's the one they read on there. Those are the three lots. Gary has um, emailed us each of the last four, five, six years. He's tapped the trees. He makes syrup. He donates some of the syrup to the library so they can uh, use it for fundraising. Um, and I guess I don't know why we have, wouldn't approve it. We've always approved it. He does a nice job, makes everything nice and clean, cleans it up.
Did he, did he leave?
No, he's in the way back. He's way back there.
Gare, do you have any idea what the library has brought in based on your donations? And my second question is, if I have washed my container, do you want them back? Or do you reuse or do you use?
I, I can reuse them. Um, and I don't know what the li, what the library's yielded cumulatively. Uh, I think last year we gave them three or four gallons and twelve and a half ounce of bottles, and they sell it at their little stand in the lobby. Um, it's kind of a cool thing to do.
Yeah, it is. It is. I'll bring you, um, I'll pop into Board of Finance and bring you my.
Or, or if you see the steam rising, swing by.
That's right. This is my year to try and come. I, yes, definitely. I'll make um, I'll make a motion to um, approve Gary Anino tapping um, the designated town trees for um, maple sugaring.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion to let Gary tap the trees, which he has done in, I don't, I don't know how many years, Gary, five, six, seven? Six years, he said, from the balcony. Um, okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Prove three zero. Um, also, we had a request come in after the minutes were made. It was from um, Wayne Biasi and John Bradshaw, who do the same thing at the Hewitt Farm. They, we approved it last year and the year before. Since I don't have the written request with me, we don't have to approve it tonight. We can do it on the sixteenth if you want to. I mean, they've, they've done it for the last three or four years and we've always said yes, but.
Um, am I still on?
You are.
I'm, I'll make a motion. I'll make, uh, Wayne and who else?
Wayne Biasi and, and John Bradshaw, and they do it on a certain part of the Hewitt Farm. Always the same area.
So I'll make a motion to approve Wayne Biasi and um, John Bradshaw to tap trees on Hewitt Farm for maple sugaring.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. And when I, um, tomorrow when I get the, I'll see the email. I can forward it to you. But, alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ordinance on veterans exemption. So there's two parts of this. I just want to give you some explanation. You have the ordinance in front of you as written by our new uh, assessor. Uh, they passed this in Stonington. And as you know, we had some assessor issues in the last year. We had a, an assessor was having some personal issues and he was working very part-time and there was some mistakes made. And we know that last year was the first year of a very bad and vague bill that came through Hartford on veterans exemptions. And they said to the town, the state, that there's four point nine million dollars worth exemptions for the whole state. Uh, there was well more than that just in New London. I'm not talking to the mayor of New London. I think they said that he would have two that would qualify, and he had well over eighty that qualified. So a lot of, this is an unfunded mandate. A lot of it came out of the town taxes. That was not expected. And there's a lot of pushback from the, uh, from the COGS, from the, from the mayors and First Selectmen. And instead of them changing it, they gave local town options on what we can do. There's four people in our town that got exemptions last year that shouldn't have. Shouldn't have. However, their property, and I would just tell you this, the, the, and I'm not going to name them, but the four people of people that actually should get the exemption, and I actually don't have the heart to take it away from them after they got it incorrectly last year. But if we adopt the, the local option, it would make them qualify again. To give you an idea of what their properties are worth that they assess that, one sixty, one nine, one sixteen, one oh seven, and sixty-four thousand. So we're not talking about, there are some people in some towns that make six figures and live in houses worth over a million dollars that are getting the exemption because they qualify under what the, well, the state sent us last year. They, they put no limit on income. It was, it's a travesty of how they did it. And then the towns were stuck trying to figure it out. And again, because of the, some of the confusion that was going on in our assessors' office last year, then we had no assessor for a while. And then we had a part-time assessor we hired from another town. And now finally, we have the Stonington Assessor, part-time, but she is, she's also the president of the Assessors Association. Very intelligent. And she came to me last week and said, you've got four people that you have to take this away from. And then people that she felt were really in need of this. If we do adopt, uh, adopt this local option, there'd be three other people that would call, qualify for a total of seven. The total amount of a grand list that they own in, in seven homes adds up to seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. I think that seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. I think that the town owes it to our veterans that do qualify under the local option. And uh, we, but we have to do this in a town meeting. So she came to my office last week and said, this is what's happening. If you want to get it done, it has to be done before January first. I said, we have a town meeting from last Monday. I said, I can't get it on that call. We already called it. It's already been advertised. I can't do it. I don't like to have, as you don't, and John, you'll find out, we don't like to have a lot of town meetings. If you have a lot of town meetings, they lose their importance. I like to do the one in November, which is a maintenance type of meeting. We usually do a special town meeting somewhere during the year, something that happens that we have to have a town meeting. And we always have one in May for the budget. Um, I think if you have five, six, seven town meetings, they just, they're not important. So um, for us to do this, and it's the next item on the agenda, would be to call for the town meeting. But first, we have to have a vote to see if the Selectmen will do, if they want to adopt this, that this part of, it's a change to our ordinance, or it's, it's an addition to our current ordinance, to adopt the local option that will, I think, do the right thing toward the, the people that deserve this veterans exemption that are, that aren't going to get it. And they've been, like I said, four of them did get it last year. Now I don't have the heart to say, no, no, you're not going to get it. So. Um, Jen uh, said she could be at the town meeting to explain it much better than I can because when it comes to these things, it's, I'm not the, the best explaining land use and, and uh, assessors, uh, the assessment uh, part of this. But with that said, if you looked at the ordinance that you received, I'd like to um, have a motion, and then if there's any discussion, and then we vote. If the, if the Board of Select can vote to approve this, then we'll look at approving the town meeting for December fifteenth. And I will put out, as you know, I don't like to post on social media. I will put out some bulletin boards, which John, he'll share for me.
Yes.
Um, to apologize for having this town meeting so quickly. I don't like to do it, but I think it's unnecessary because we have a deadline.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance change that, for section nineteen two five, property tax exemption for veterans based on unemployability.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have this. So now we'll, we'll discuss. Uh, is there anything that either Selectmen would like to say about this? And then after that, I can open up to the floor.
So just, it's a, is it a complete waiving of taxes or a reduction?
So the veterans, no, it's a, it's a waiving. The reduction, uh, this, this veterans bill came from Hartford last year. Yeah. And it's a, it's a reduction on just the home, not vehicles, not outbuildings, just the home.
Okay.
But it's, it's a full reduction.
Okay.
But these are people who are totally disabled, uh, one hundred percent disabled, one hundred percent totally disabled, I think it's. And we got the information originally from the veterans, but the information with veterans was not the way that the state calculated it.
Okay. And the seven hundred and twenty-two thousand and change is the total coming off the tax?
That's just the grand, that's not the taxes.
Okay.
So it would be the taxes on that, which if we figured that today, would be twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two.
Okay.
But we know the grand list is, I mean, the, uh,
Yeah, so.
No, it's going to change.
Twenty thousand and change is the impact to?
Twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two and twenty, thirty-three cents.
Okay. And when, if we adopt it, it is adopted forever?
So it is, but each year the veterans have to come in and reapply.
Okay.
In case something happens. Now, I don't expect someone that's fully, one hundred percent disabled will be maybe, maybe it's a cancer situation, you can get better. But mostly, if you're one hundred percent disabled, you are one hundred percent disabled. Um, so, but they still have to come and apply each year. Because some people move out of town and.
Okay.
There. Uh, any other, John, you have any discussion?
This is for one hundred percent disability, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For a service-related.
Service-related.
Okay. With that said, is there any comment by anyone in the audience or online that would like to make comment before we vote? Yeah, I knew you were here for a reason. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric Higgleston. I live on forty-five Lake of Isles Road. I just moved here about six years ago from Montana. Um, I have two Purple Hearts. I'm a hundred percent disabled. Um, I heard that there's a rumor going around that they're going to try to see if they're going to do the land as well as the house. Is that, is an agenda?
So that has not happened yet. I know that uh, there was people in Hartford working on that to include automobiles and outbuildings. Uh, it's not, as far as I know, it's not been approved as of right now. So what, this is still, is just on the home itself.
Okay.
And have you already filled out your paperwork and you're qualified?
Yes, I already got my exemption. I'm a hundred percent disabled as well.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else about this particular?
No, I just wondered if this land is going to be exempt as well in, in the future.
I, um, my assessor now, uh, Jen Heinweber, will be the first to tell me when she comes in. So she, she, she's in every Friday, but this week she's coming in on Thursday. And uh, she's very knowledgeable. Or you can leave a message at the assessor's office and Jen will get back to you either through email or phone call.
Okay, thanks.
But as far as I know, it has not, they have not changed anything but just the home at this point.
Okay, so it's only going to apply for a hundred percent disabled veterans. So the other people that are on that list that didn't qualify, you're going to take, if they don't have that ability, they have to reapply for the hundred percent then, right? Correct?
You have to, we, you have to apply, I think.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor approving the ordinance as read, as described by John, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, it's three, three zero, I said aye. So that's approved. So now we can call for a town meeting. John, would you like, can you read this, Robby? Does it say call? Argument, or it's a call? John?
Warning is hereby given to the electors and those entitled to vote at a town meetings of North Stonington. That a special town meeting shall be held at the following location on the date and time indicated for the purposes of transacting the business set forward below. Location, North Stonington Education Center, Media Center, two ninety-eight Norwich Wesley Road via Zoom. Meeting ID, eight two six one nine zero four eight zero one one, passcode two one three nine zero six. Date, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, time, six thirty. Only those attending the meeting in person will be able to vote. The meeting will be available for comment and viewing through Zoom at the link above. But those attending virtually will not be able to vote. All supporting documentation will be available on the town website, Number one, shall the town adopt the ordinance, section nineteen two five, property tax exemption for veterans based on unemployability, expanding the eligibility of veteran property tax exemption per the guidelines of Connecticut Public Act twenty-four forty-six, as permitted under House Bill seven two eight seven. Two, shall the town clerk be allowed to publish an abbreviated version of the legal ad regarding the notice of passage of the ordinance? Board of Selectmen, John Gadjon Jr., Robert Carlson, First Selectman, Nicole Porter, Selectman.
Thank you, John. Alright, so there's a call to the town meeting. Um, I entertain a motion to approve the call as read.
Uh, sorry, there's nothing else we can, nothing else, no other housekeeping things because we just did it, right?
No, unfortunately, but um, so it shouldn't be a long town meeting.
Yeah, no.
And I hate dragging people just close to the holidays, but it's um, if you, if I didn't have to, we would.
It's, yeah, okay. Yep, sorry, go ahead, John.
Make a motion to approve the call for a town meeting as written, as read.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, three zero, I will, I have the original copy that we'll sign this evening. And, and tonight we'll advertise it. She'll send it to the paper tomorrow. And we'll be in the meeting on that Monday, the fifteenth. Perfect. Um, all business, vacancies and appointments. So um, Mr. Robbins was here at the last meeting and I didn't have his application, remember?
Is he here tonight?
And he's here again. I said he didn't have to come back because now we know who he was, but he wants to attend, which is perfect. Um, so I would make a motion that we appoint um, you, Robbins. Let me just get the application. Hang on one second.
Great experience for ZBA, so thank you.
Do you have it in your packet, Nicole?
Yeah. You want me to, what do you want me to read?
No, just that we have his application on file. And he's, I think it's um, he's going to be appointed to the ZBA, correct?
Yep, ZBA alternate for right, for right now.
Okay, so I motion that we appoint um, Mr. Robbins to the ZBA alternate position.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Oh, sure, now I found it. Are you, thank you, and thank you for participating, and I appreciate you being on the zoning Board of, zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you. Uh, they don't meet that often, but you never know. Um, also, I had a request, and I don't have an application yet, from um, Lori Hopkins-Cavanaugh to be on the Affordable Housing. So Lori, if you could.
Much needed.
If you could, if you can grab a form from Town Hall, or how, so your husband actually give it to you when I give you the permit, the boarding permit. But I didn't know you were going to apply then. Um, if you can get one of these back to me, or get back to the town clerk, uh, be, between now and the sixteenth, we'd be glad to appoint you on the sixteenth.
They haven't met in four months.
I know. He's on the committee. Right. Alright, so anyway, with that said, um, yeah, if you can fill that out, we'll get you appointed on the sixteenth. Okay, is there uh, any other public comment for this evening? Mike? Mike Riley, Route one eighty-four, North Stonington.
Something short and sweet. I think if you look back your minutes, you were saying the December thirteenth is going to be at the school of monuments?
December thirteenth is the, is the um,
Wreaths Across America.
Wreaths Across America.
Right. I thought you said it was going to be for the two hundred and fiftieth in the comments, no?
No, two hundred and fiftieth is not till next summer.
Alright, I thought you mentioned.
We're only at two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty-nine and a half.
It's 214 days.
Okay, but that's not the 13th of December. Okay, anything else? Any other public comment, anything online? None? Okay, our next meeting is um, well, we have, we just called for a town meeting on the 15th. The next Board of Select meeting is on the 16th. And I want to thank you all for coming, thank you for the public comment, and we will move forward with uh, with our act.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:40.
Okay, motion to adjourn at 7:40?